Yeah. But that's her board.
She must have an idea. And then she, 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 yeah, she, she didn't have an idea. So she's gotten, she's gotten very, very good at it. She's got.
Been released.
It's seven o'clock and I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman. Mr. Kuskudis.
Here.
Mr. Servopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Bee Hill. Mr. Kulianos.
Here.
Mr. Andriotis.
At this point, I'd like to ask if we have a quorum. Okay, we do have a quorum, okay. Second order of business is to approve the minutes of September twentieth. If the board remembers, we had requested we defer these minutes, the approval of these minutes to this, this meeting. I would ask and entertain a motion that we defer the discussion on these minutes till after the application process. Get, get the applicants through the process first to talk about the minutes after. I'd like to have that entertained as a motion.
Chair, I'll motion that we defer the minutes to the end of the meeting.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Oh, any discussion, I'm sorry, any discussion? There being none, roll call, please.
Mr. Kulianos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes. Okay, we'll skip to the quasi judicial announcement and I will let you, our attorney, do that.
Sure. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the planning and zoning board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest related to any of the three applications we have before us this evening? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand up, raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn.
Okay. Yes, we're gonna move on to the first application, application twenty-one dash ninety-one. Conditional use, approval to allow warehouse use at the U.S. Highway nineteen North Highway Business. And I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. This property is located at four one five two two U.S. Highway nineteen North. And it is basically the site where the Lukens Liquor Store is, so this is looking at that site. And the applicant wishes to propose a warehouse use, that is, a conditional use in the Highway Business District. So the front portion is currently occupied by a retail store. It was previously the Tarpon Lanes Bowling Alley and it is now a retail store with, it's a multi-tenant building. I believe Lukens is the only one in there now. This area, this site again is zoned Highway Business. It's in the commercial, general, future land use category. The surrounding uses, especially north of Cypress Street, are characterized by some of the older kind of warehouse industrial kind of uses in Tarpon. Just going back to this slide, you've got the Duke Energy Yard across the street and the cemetery. The car dealership up here, the Lowe's here, mini storage, those kinds of uses. Astros Gate behind, so those kind of north nineteen uses up to the river are transitioning older industrial warehouse or, you know, those types of manufacturing, different uses like that that are either in transition or still used for that. And then, of course, south of the site, you have more retail. You've got the Walmart, the shopping center with the Walmart in it down to East Tarpon Ave. So the immediate surroundings, again, the Life Storage Mini Warehouse, Astros Gate to the west, and the Tarpon Square Shopping Center to the south. The nearest residential is the Cypress Place Apartments, over two hundred feet away and separated from the site by the Astros Gate property and really this area of Cypress Street, which eventually goes down to, leads into North Huey Avenue, with there's a large expanse of wetlands over here to the west. So the request is for the warehouse use. This would entail the addition of a warehouse to the existing built property. The warehouse is proposed at forty-four hundred square feet in size. That's pretty much the limit that can be added floor area wise to this property under this zoning. This is a conceptual layout. The applicant will have to go through a site plan approval process. So the existing building on site is an existing legal non-conforming use. This was built in nineteen fifty-nine. But the new use will have to comply with code as far as landscaping and parking and those types of things. The applicant in this case is actually proposing and will be proposing with the site plan to reduce their impervious surface to accommodate those, the landscaping and those types of things. So they buy our drainage code. If they stay the same or reduce, they do not have to do the full drainage, so that's the proposal here. Just kind of a layout showing where that warehouse will be added. There is an existing curb cut, access will be off of Cypress Street. Warehouse office is a low traffic generator, so as far as public facilities, trip generation on a warehouse is on the order of like, for, for something this size, maybe seven or eight trips a day. So it's generally pretty low. I should also mention that warehouse, the warehouse use is defined in our code. It gen, it basically is an establishment where the primary use is the storage of merchandise, products or materials in bulk or for fee, or for distribution to other establishments operated by the same business enterprise. So this use that you're allowing by conditional use is really a little, fairly benign use. The applicant has not provided the floor area for the office versus the warehouse, but they will not be able to put noisy, kind of noxious or industrial or manufacturing uses in here without another conditional use request to you. So with respect to your criteria, we believe the concept layout will conform with the land development code in general. Again, they'll have to go through a site plan approval, so they will have to modify any, any, you know, they'll have to tweak that site plan to meet all the land development code requirements. The use is appropriate to the area. This is a conditional use because, as you know, highway business is really focused on the retail, you know, services, restaurants, shopping, those types of personal services, those uses. So when a warehouse comes in, the future land use, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan and the zoning code want you to look at those and just ensure that they do fit. In this case, you've got an existing property. This is in the back of the property off of nineteen, so it really is appropriate to the site. It is therefore consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's not located in a historic district and not in an environmentally sensitive site. And as mentioned, we expect the site to improve with the reduction of impervious surface. This project will not adversely, is not expected to adversely affect adjoining property values. The adjoining properties are retail or warehouse, commercial, recreation, those types of things. So this business, this allows this, this property remain viable and hopefully to maintain property values in this area. This property is already served. The applicant will have to extend the water and sewer to the back, but they are expected to be able to do that. Otherwise, it's served by facilities and staff is recommending approval of the warehouse use. And if a site plan has not been approved within twelve months, this would have, this conditional use would expire. So it is possible, we had a code change a couple of years ago, making it possible for people to ask for a conditional use without a site plan, but you do have to have that site plan approved within a year or come back again with the conditional use. This was noticed and there were no responses received. Are there any questions?
Does the board have any questions?
I have two. The existing building, you'd mentioned that it's a non-compliant, built in nineteen fifty-nine. What does that mean? How is it non-compliant now?
It's an existing legal non-conforming use. Good example, if you see, there are no side setbacks. That's probably the biggest thing, I would say. I'm guessing the landscaping, the land, there's no real landscape buffer along the property line. That's another good example. Now, we have an eight-foot buffer. There are landscape islands and landscaping provided there, but those would be two good examples. We didn't enumerate every single thing, but I would say those are the most glaring that I see. So the front setback looks good, and of course, the rear setback is fine, too, so.
So side setbacks and then perhaps some minor lack of buffering on the existing building that had a major reconstruction a few years ago, used to be a bowling alley?
Yes, internal remodel, yeah.
So another question, often when we see these, we're gonna call this a site plan, but it's conceptual. There's a water retention or stormwater retention plan associated with that, and I don't see that here. And even though we can read, they're trying to be generous about, well, we're gonna get rid of some of the parking lot. That's great, but is there a stormwater retention plan? And often we hear that noted specifically that all stormwater shall be treated on-site. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, and our code does allow the, if, if they were just putting a building on top of the impervious, it's already impervious, our code allows that. Second thing is, the applicant may be able to speak to their plan. I believe they want to maybe provide some, some type of swale or some minimal retention, but by our code, they basically are exempt. Third thing would be, we would ask that they check with the Southwest Florida Water Management District to make sure they're exempt from their rules as well. So, and then they would, if not, they would supply that permit or exemption with their building permit. So really, they're exempt from our code from doing full stormwater on this site.
Okay, I was gonna ask again, just for clarification, is that frankly, they get a pass and wouldn't have to do anything, even in this era of attempting to reduce our stormwater issues? So the best we can do is say please and hold them to their word that they might add some retention?
Yes, and I think when we look at the site plan-
Because I happen to know that that road floods pretty good.
Yeah, and, and we've got wetlands over here and that's why, that's why I mentioned that. We've got some things going on here, trying to deal with that on this old Cypress right-of-way. The Life Storage has a facility here, a stormwater facility. We are going to ask in site plan review that the applicant show that, that they're not interfering with that stormwater facility. Like I said, they may be able to speak to, to that. So, yeah, we are gonna be looking at it. We just can't require full compliance with the drainage-
And then, sorry, guys, just, just one more, last but not least-
Good questions.
Since, since we're, if we were to approve as applied, we're kind of writing a blank check, giving the conditional use based on this. Is there any teeth in this at all that says, hey, we would expect that the site plan would closely resemble what is here? So that we don't go surprise and a different building's built?
Yeah, so, so there, this, no, this, this concept plan is just being shown to you. It's not attached to any approval. The use is what you're approving. I will say the applicant did request a variance to setbacks and to floor area issue with the Board of Adjustment. Both of those were denied. The site is pretty well limited to the layout that you see, including the floor area. There may be some minor adjustments, but it's, there's not a whole lot of options without that variance that was requested and, and denied, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I do have a ques, unless anybody else has a question. This is basically, this is basically a warehouse office where you have a warehouse. You may have a little office adjacent to your little warehouse. Is that what the concept is?
I believe so, but the applicant should answer that.
Okay, do we have, does, does the city have any prohibition or restrictions with, with regard to items that can be stored? For example, chemicals and things of that, that nature? So even whether, whether it's a stor, a storage facility, let's say a pool service wanted to rent and store all their chemicals or pool chemicals, or something that was highly volatile? Are there restrictions that we have in place in the city that, that limit or certain criteria when you do store that, those type of things?
Yes, both the square footage of each devoted to each use and the building construction will have to comply with building codes and fire codes. Fire codes probably are the dominant thing there with firewall separation, storage materials, and whether something's sprinkled or not, which it won't-
And that, that's, that's a given with, with, with or without a conditional criteria?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody other questions? Is, is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, Todd Pressman, Two Hundred Second Avenue South, number four fifty-one in St. Petersburg, Florida. Your staff's done a great job. We work with them on this request and they really have covered everything a couple, just a few highlights, which would be that, as your staff has indicated to you, this site meets the conditional use before you, meets the criteria of the code and the criteria before you. It meets the, and is compatible with the immediate uses in the area. It will be a improvement of the site. Basically, right now, and partly to Mr. Vessi, if I can read that correctly, some of your questions. The site is just one hundred percent pavement. So coming in after conditional use, this use approval, the site is gonna be improved. It will be substantially better with a lot more impervious surface per required by code. It is in the Highway Business District. The Comprehensive Plan District, the, the future land use category does call for this use. It is compatible and warehouses are specifically a part of that category. As indicated from the staff, this will have to come in for site plan review and will have to review, have to meet all rules, regulations, requirements, not just of the city, but a SWIFTMUD and any other jurisdiction that would normally have control of the site. I think also the important, there's been no opposition whatsoever, that we've been made aware of for this request. In regard to a couple of questions, if I may, the existing building is a legal non-conforming use. It's there per quote grandfathering. It's not a part of this application. I understand certainly to ask questions about it and to ask its condition, but that's not part of this request today directly. Whatever is required for retention, whether by the city or by SWIFTMUD or any other jurisdiction, that'll have to be provided. But again, that would be an improvement. There's any other questions, we happy to answer them for you.
Does the board have any questions of the applicant?
Just with the building of, of this warehouse and the usage of the parking, will that cause any issues? It might be also a Pat question as well. Will that cause any issues with the existing large building?
No, they're actually completely separated on the site.
But as far as parking, it, this, this will requ, how much, how much, how many spots are required for a warehouse space?
There's no variance as for parking, so they will have to meet parking requirements. And warehouses are very low. They, they have one of the lowest trip rates compared to cellular antennas, very low rate.
So you don't believe it impairs the larger structure and use?
No, sir, will not.
Okay.
Absolutely will not.
And to answer your question, I'd have to look. I think it's, it's a couple spaces per fifteen hundred square feet. They'll be okay on parking with the warehouse, I believe. So they, they're kind of looking at, obviously, they have rear access to this building, so they'll be able to maintain that, I believe, along with the warehouse, which, which as Mr. Preston mentioned, is a, is a separate, kind of a standalone use here. But how they organize that parking is really up to them.
But it's not an issue?
Right.
Thank you. All right, unless this board has any questions, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank the board, thank board members.
We received no emails. I see no emails or other people anxious to get up and make a comment, so at this point, if anybody wants to make a motion.
I make, I make a motion that we approve application number twenty-one dash ninety-one, conditional use approval.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kulianos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes. I wanted to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank board members.
Thank you. Next application, twenty-one dash one fifty. It's a conditional use to approve an alternative dimensional plan to allow construction of a second detached residential dwelling on a separate lot located at one forty Reed Street in residential multifamily zoning district. Did I say that right?
You did. Okay, Ali Keane, Senior Planner. Okay, the subject property is located on the north side of Reed Street. It's outlined here in yellow on your screen. This area is really a mixture of different residential zoning. This property is in the residential multifamily of the RM District. Across the street to the south is in the conditional residential mixed district. There's R seventy to the west, which is one and two family zoning, and then there's more multifamily to the east of the site. The applicants are here today seeking conditional use approval to allow for an alternative dimensional plan. Again, this property is located in the RM zoning district, which provides this alternative dimensional plan provision. dimensional plan provision. They are seeking approval for the alternate dimensions in order to construct a new single-family home, detached home on a separate parcel. The existing property is about 10,700 square feet in size. The current land use is RM, which is residential medium. Based on the current size of the property, they would be permitted up to a total of four dwelling units. Currently, there's just one single-family dwelling on the property. The addition of another unit would be a total of two units. The proposed modifications in terms of dimensions include for Lot A, which we're referring to, for the existing home lot, would be a reduced minimum lot width. For Lot B is the new lot they're proposing to create. They're seeking a reduced lot area, a reduced lot width, and a reduced interior side setback. And I'll go into those in a little more detail. This is a look at their conceptual lot layout and site plan. The current lot configuration is the yellow square on the screen. Again, there's an existing single-family residence on the eastern portion of the site, and they are looking to split off the western side of the property to create a new lot, which is Lot B labeled here, and that's outlined in red. As I mentioned, the land development code provides a provision in the RM zoning district that allows applicants to request an alternative dimensional plan whereby the zoning dimensional criteria may be modified. This includes, you know, your minimum lot dimensions and standards, your setbacks. Specifically, you are not allowed to request alterations to maximum height or your net floor area, so those are not included in this request. And the intent behind this provision is to accommodate unique residential projects or to accommodate projects that may be located on an unusual or difficult project site. In order to get approval of an alternative dimensional plan, applicants need to seek conditional use approval, which is why they're before the Planning and Zoning Board today. And that is also to look at compatibility. Specifically to compatibility, this section of the code states that the board needs to consider scale, mass, intensity, size, height, style, and aesthetics, as well as preserving the character of the adjacent neighborhood or the community. The proposed alternative dimensional plan is outlined in the table here on the screen. In the table, it has the minimum standards that are affected in the RM District in comparison to proposed Lot A, again, the existing home lot, and proposed Lot B, which is the new lot. The items that I've highlighted in the red text are the items that they're proposing to modify. So, for proposed Lot A, the existing home lot, they're looking for a reduced lot width. The minimum lot width is 60 feet, they're proposing 57 and a half feet. And then, looking at proposed Lot B, which is the new parcel, they're looking for a smaller lot area. The minimum requirement is 7,000 square feet, they're seeking 3,500 square feet. The minimum lot width is 60 feet in this district, they're seeking a minimum lot width of 28 feet. And then, for the side setbacks, they're seeking a reduced setback for the right or the interior side to be five and a half feet, which is two feet smaller than required. And zooming back out and looking at the context, this, again, this area along Reed Street has multifamily zoning on the north side, mixed residential zoning on the south side. All the properties that are fronting the street, I did a calculation, and the average lot area is just about 9,600 square feet. The average lot width is 80 feet. Again, the proposed Lot B is proposed to be at 3,500 square feet and a minimum lot width of 28 feet. I will note that there is one existing lot along Reed Street right here that is pretty comparable, if not almost exactly the same dimensions as what is being proposed, but other than that, the rest of the properties are larger. A few considerations with this application. First, is in regards to location. This property is located within the city's historic district. The existing home is also designated as a contributing structure. So, therefore, any new construction, so a new home on the property or in addition to the existing structure would require Heritage Preservation Board approval. This property is also located within a flood zone. FEMA requirements would apply to any new construction in terms of elevation. However, any remodeling of the existing structure, not necessarily additions to the structure, but remodeling, would be exempt from FEMA requirements because it is a contributing, designated contributing structure. Looking back at the neighborhood context, essentially, every property along Reed Street, with the exception of the subject property, was built in the 1910s, 1920s. They have primarily a craftsman architectural style, so they're typically narrower front elevations, and they're deeper homes, deep lots. The existing home on this property was built in 1959, it has a vernacular style, and they are proposing for the new home to be a shotgun-style craftsman home, to be consistent with the historic properties in the neighborhood. And the applicant has indicated that their proposal is more in context with the neighborhood and, because it does not disrupt the historic massing along Reed Street, as opposed to adding on to the existing home to create a duplex or to expand the frontage of that. This is your, I'm sorry?
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Okay. You made a comment about they are or are not looking at making a duplex or-
So, that was, yeah, that was something that, a potential option. So, this is in multifamily zoning. Duplexes are a permitted use. One option would be to add on to the existing home to get a second unit, because, again, this property could have up to four units based on its allowed density. It's only one unit right now, but the applicant's choosing to go this route because they believe it's more in context with the neighborhood. And I will also say, any addition to the home, because it's in historic district, there's different guidelines, so they'd have to meet any of that if they did add on to the home. Okay, so this is a look at your review criteria. With respect to the first criteria, conforms to the land development code, it is staff's opinion that although the RM District provides the opportunity to request an alternative dimensional plan, we believe that it's intended to be utilized to permit you those unique residential projects that don't typically conform to what you have in your standards today, as opposed to creating nonconforming lots for the purpose of constructing one single unit. As far as compatibility with the surrounding area, this immediate area is primarily single-family detached homes. We do believe that a single-family home is more in context as opposed to creating a duplex, triplex, or whatnot in this area. The use is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, it does fit within the permitted density allowances. The property, again, is in a historic district, and the existing home is a contributing structure, however, it's not located on an environmentally sensitive site. The use is not expected to adversely impact the proposing, or the surrounding property values, although it would be a new lot that results in additional unit, it is lower than the density that's allowed within this property as well as the district. And there are current facilities available to serve the property, and it is within the city limits, so it is considered efficient orderly development. Based off of that, staff does recommend denial of this application, which is Resolution 2021-65. As I mentioned previously, we believe that the true intent of this alternative dimensional plan is to allow for some unique residential projects to provide additional density in areas, as opposed to creating nonconforming lots that have a single unit. At the time that the packets were prepared, we did not receive any written notices. We did receive over the weekend three emails, which were provided to you prior to the beginning of this meeting. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Did everybody get a copy of the three emails? If you don't, John, I'll let you look at mine. I do have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. Okay. So, the current lot is nonconforming, correct?
No.
The current lot is conforming?
Not for, so, let me go to this table. Not for single-family.
What's, what's, what's our conforming lot size? I thought it was 10,000 square feet.
So, for this, for the RM District, it refers you back to the CRM District, and within that district, it has different standards for different types of development. So, for single-family detached, it's 7,000 square feet.
Okay, so, you're, they're asking, just so I understand, to take a currently conforming lot and spin off a currently conforming lot to a nonconforming lot?
In terms of area, yes.
Okay, proposed Lot B. Okay, so, so, now, is the current lot, is it under the plat? Is that have, that little proposed Lot B, does that have, is that a separate lot number on the plat, or is it all under one lot number in the plat?
I don't believe that it's a full lot. I wanna say that the original plat has a full lot and then a half of a lot, so it's not a full separated lot. It's also under common ownership, which-
So, yeah, but for proposed Lot B, proposed Lot B, it does not, it's, it's not, doesn't have its own lot number?
Correct.
Okay, it's all part of proposed Lot A?
Yeah, I'm gonna verify on this.
I don't have a copy of the plat, I'm just, if you look at the plat.
Yes, yep. The original plat in the survey of this property is all of Lot 7, and then the east half of Lot 8.
And so-
So, the east half of Lot 8, I believe, is where the new lot's proposed.
Okay. But they're under common ownership?
Yes.
Okay. Do we not have ordinances that prohibit somebody from taking a conforming lot and trying to separate it into nonconforming lot?
So, there, you are not allowed to request variances that would allow you to create a nonconforming lot. Being that this property's in the RM District, this is the only district that has this alternative dimensional plan, so this is the only opportunity to potentially create this.
So, they're not, they're not asking for, like, if you, like, if they wanted something unique to build, like in some places in Tampa, where you have a carriage house, where you have an adjacent property that, you know, maybe years ago in Tarpon Springs, they would not allow you to do that because it's increasing density on a, on a lot, but those types of things that are unique in nature, I could see something like that, but I just wanna make sure I'm clear as to what you're, what the applicant is asking for and what the city's recommending that we approve, is to take a, basically create a nonconforming lot, even in its current zoning platform, okay? And, and just from the, just from the schematic or design, is to build a long skinny house to put, that has a lot width of 28 feet, to put a, put a single-family residence there.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. The, the lot that you pointed out, that you said was of similar size, that would be to the left, right?
Right here. Yes.
That's not built on, is it?
It is built on. So, this is a house that was constructed, I'm not sure of the exact date, but between 1910, 1920s timeframe, but it is a, is similar to what is proposed, a long skinny shotgun-style home. But yes, there is a home on that lot.
Okay.
On Lot B?
No, on this property here, that's just similar.
Yeah.
Yeah. But like I said, that was constructed 1910, 1920s.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
And to clarify, so the chair, is that staff has recommended that we deny this application?
Correct, that's staff's recommendation.
Okay, super. My questions follow with this lot size, actually, the setbacks, and you highlighted it in So, not only would the lot size be off, but there would be an application for a variance for that side setback, or is the side setback at five, the 5.5?
Right.
So, that's nonconforming?
That's included in this request. So, everything that's highlighted in red in this table is the alternative dimensional plan. So, they're seeking a smaller setback for the one side as a part of this application.
Oh.
They could, yeah, they could not do a variance for this particular case.
Oh, so not only is it split off the lot, but then we give a unique setback to this one?
And that only applies on the right side, so on the left side of the property, they would meet the seven and a half feet, but yes, that is included.
Okay.
I have a question.
And I have one more, just, just, 'cause I underlined it, and you did a good job of highlighting it, is the bulleted LDC Section 2505-D2 residential projects, I'm gonna hop to the bottom, located, the whole purpose of this special carve-out that allows this application is to assist in projects that are located on unusual or difficult project sites. This is pretty fair to say, this is not an unusual or difficult project site, this is just a standard-
Not in staff's opinion.
Okay. Okay. That's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is just a statement, not a question, but we're potentially looking at a, a structure that's basically 19 feet wide, basically? I think 15, 15 probably.
Probably about that, but I'll defer the applicant, they have more details on that.
Yeah.
I think, I believe that they indicated it was about 1,000 square feet in this area.
28, sorry, 28 width minus the setbacks are 13.
Well, that's the property, it's 28.
But setbacks are 13.
Plus 15.
15 feet. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Would you please, any presentation or comment?
Hi, good evening. First, we'd like to thank the commissioners for their time today, as well as the city planning staff for the work in assessing the application. The staff report makes clear that our proposal conforms to and meets all of the review standards considered. Despite this, the staff recommendation is for our application to be denied based on the opinion that the alternative dimensional review process was not intended for single units, and that our proposal is not unique. Respectfully, we disagree with that. To our knowledge, there's nothing in the land development code or any other local ordinance which limits the use of alternative dimensional review to multiple units or prohibits the use for single units. To quote the original 2009 report to city commissioners, "The purpose of the ordinance that allows for alternative dimensional review was to provide a flexible approach rather than to try and create new dimensional criteria to address varying needs." The RM zoning classification covers very little land in the city of Tarpon Springs. It applies to small pockets throughout the city, mainly on parcels of land that have already been developed, long before the alternative dimensional review part of the ordinance was adopted. It's comprised almost entirely of relatively small lots, most of which are unlikely to be in common or in unified ownership with the adjacent lots. Our parcel in itself is therefore unique and unusual. It's made up of the whole of Lot 7 and half of Lot 8. The split we are proposing mirrors the original lot lines for that street almost identically to within half a foot. No other property on Reed Street includes one whole lot plus one half lot of record. For example, the property to the left, the west, is made up of two half lots, the, and beyond that is 158 Reed Street, which is on half lot only, which you brought up earlier. The house to the east lies across two whole lots, and our existing house lies squarely within Lot 7. 140 Reed Street is therefore unique in that it has a buildable amount of underutilized land to the west of the existing house. As pointed out in our justification, which accompanied the application, the construction of a simple, single-family attached or semi-detached dwelling on our property doesn't require any specific zoning approvals, only the Historic Preservation Board consent and a building permit. This is despite the fact that there are no other attached homes in the neighborhood, all of them instead being single-family detached, which is what we're proposing. We just feel that that's a lot more consistent and appropriate for the neighborhood. This is a very unique and unusual situation where we are allowed, without any zoning approval, to build something that's not in keeping with the spacing and type of housing in the neighborhood, but we're not allowed to build something which reflects the current development pattern and character, i.e. the single-family detached one that we're proposing. This is even more important, given its location in the historic district, where housing type, spacing, and context is of elevated importance. We feel that our proposal, when considered against the alternative of single-family attached home instead, brings benefits not only to ourselves as the owners, but to the city of Tarpon Springs, the immediate neighbors, the neighborhood, and the historic context of the neighborhood. We therefore ask that you approve our application for alternative dimensional review to enable us to build a detached rather than an attached, single-family home. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I'm just, hello, Mr. Page.
Hi.
Hi. I'm just curious, are, do you, are you planning to live in the home?
The plan, it varies. My wife's family is quite sick at the moment, so we're trying to find either we build a home for them and we move into the other house, or we're trying to build that house so we can sell it and build a house next to our current home in Dunedin.
Okay.
Thank you.
You indicated in, in your statement that when you were citing the ordinance, that the purpose of the ordinance was to accommodate the varying needs. What did you mean by varying needs? What is your varying need?
Our varying need?
Yeah.
The alternative dimensional review. We're allowed to put an attached house there, we just feel it's more appropriate for a detached house there, and this is the route that would allow us to pursue this, so therefore that would be the, the varying need that we are pursuing.
Fair answer. Any other questions of the applicant? Any public comment? We did receive three emails from- We did receive three emails from adjacent residents. Do they, are they just, we accept them or do we need to read them in the record?
You can just accept them and
Okay.
They are part of the record that you've received.
And just, and just for the record, they, they all agree, they all agree with the city's recommendation as well. So. Any other public comments? That being said, none. The board would like to, first, let's take a motion and then if we want to discuss it, we can. Does anybody want to offer a motion?
Chair, I'm going to motion in regards to application 21-150 and application 21-134.
Yes, that's.
Can I motion for both same time?
Uh, yes.
That we deny application. We deny as submitted for both of those applications.
Is there a second?
21-134 is item number six.
Yeah, 134 is another.
There's only one part of this.
There's only one part of this, I'm sorry.
Oh, forgive me. So I didn't ma, I didn't mean to make it worse than it was.
One part of this one. So yes, there's one motion for one application.
Application, so I'll just repeat myself for clarification for the record. Chair, I'm going to motion denial for application 21-150.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's, any discussion?
Since I made the motion, if I may, I, I'm kind of trying to be thoughtful about this. Obviously, the comments in regards to the adjacent lot down the road. But it's easy to get pulled into that because we did a lot of things in the past that are there, but there's a reason we have current land code. I think that the interpretation that staff made of the actual purpose of this carve-out is clear and concise. It's there to fix a real, real problem, and this is not a real problem that has to be fixed. This is just a convenience, although I appreciate the time and effort and the thought into it. It's just a personal preference. And then add to it the change in a side setback that nobody else gets, and that's just a, a, a road too far. And those are my thoughts on that.
Any other board comments? You know, I, I, I understand your plight. I have to agree with a fellow board member. You know, I, looking at, at the proposed minimum lot width, that's, that's a, that's just.
It's small.
Yeah, it's, it's small. It's small. And, and, you know, obviously, 100, you know, not even 100 years ago, in some parts of, of down at the dock areas, the lots were 30-foot wide or 20-foot, 25-foot wide. I understand that back then, but things, you know, one of the reasons why we have, we've changed our building plans or, or, or processes to, to, that you, that's not allowed today. And I don't need to pontificate anymore on that. So I'd like to go ahead and call for the motion.
Is there no other discussion?
Anybody else?
I second.
Yeah. So we had a first, above, we had a motion and a second.
No, I know, but was there any other discussion that was to be had? Is my question.
Mr. Colianos, were you the second?
I seconded, yes.
So I'll call for the motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Colianos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seropoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes. Okay. Onto application.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application 21-134, preliminary plan development approval of rezoning to residential plan development for single-family detached residential subdivision located the southeast corner of Mellon Street and North Jasmine Avenue.
All right. Ally Keen again. Okay, this property again is at the southeast corner of North Jasmine Avenue and Mellon Street. It's outlined in yellow here on the screen. I'll point it out because it kind of blends in a little bit. It's about four and a half, 4.6 acres in size. This property is currently zoned R100, which is a single-family zoning district. There is residential plan development zoning to the north, which is the North Lake of Tarpon Springs development. Multifamily over here, and then to the south is the Rose Cemetery, to the west is the Cicadia Cemetery, and then the Tarpon Springs Sports Complex is over here to the east of the site. Also here, this blue dotted line is the location of the Pinellas Trail on the north side of Mellon Street. The applicants are here today requesting preliminary plan development approval for the North Lake Trail development. This is under ordinance 2021-26. That ordinance essentially is requesting to rezone the property to the residential plan development district as well as approve the preliminary plan development. This property, under its current land use designation of RL, which is Residential Lo, would be permitted a total of 23 units. The applicants are proposing to develop 18 units, or 18 single-family lots. They are also requesting two waivers as a part of the application, which I'll get into more detail here in a moment. And then there is a sister or companion application for a right-of-way vacation for Cypress Street, which is an unimproved right-of-way along the southern portion of the site. It's outlined here in orange. I just wanted to make mention that that's part of this overall development. The Planning and Zoning Board does not review vacation requests. Those go directly to the Board of Commissioners, so we just want to make you aware of that. As a part of their proposed site plan, they have a set of dimensional standards, which are outlined here on the screen. They are proposing a minimum lot area of 5,400 square feet, a minimum lot width of 40 feet, a minimum lot depth of 125 feet, maximum height of 35 feet. And when looking at the setbacks, they're proposing a front yard setback of 20 feet, side yard setback, minimum 5 feet, side street, minimum 10 feet, and the rear yard of 10 feet. As I had mentioned, they are looking to vacate the Cypress Street right-of-way along the southern portion. Typically, when right-of-way is vacated, half of it goes to one adjoining property and the other half goes to the other adjoining property. The applicants are in conversations with the adjoining property to the south, which is the Rose Cemetery, to acquire the entire right-of-way. In the event they are unable to acquire that entire right-of-way, they provided an alternate lot layout, which is what's shown here. And I'll point out the differences. It's pretty minimal in terms of the development. First, the minimum lot area, there's a few lots, I believe there's four lots that would have a dimension of 40 by 126, which would be 5,040 square feet. The original layout had 5,400 square feet minimum lot area. The vacated right-of-way would affect the depth of the properties along here, in the outline in blue, which are lots 12 through 18. They're proposing 135 feet. This would go down to 126 feet. And then the lot width for these two properties outlined in orange, they'll be at 45 feet and 47 and a half feet. So those are the only changes that result from this. And I do believe that they have additional information about the right-of-way vacation, and I'll defer the applicant to elaborate on that. The land development code provides in the preliminary or the plan development section of the code the opportunity to request waivers for any design standard within the land development code. The applicants, again, are proposing two. A waiver cannot be granted unless it's been demonstrated that one of the five scenarios have been met or justified with the request. Those scenarios are a superior alternative, protection of significant features, deprivation of reasonable use, a technical impracticality, or no relationship to the development or its impacts. The first waiver is in reference to lot dimensions and setbacks. The land development code for the RPD District for single-family detached homes, it does provide a set of minimum standards. It is common for plan developments to come in and request an alternate dimensions for their development. In this case, the applicants are requesting a waiver to lot area. The minimum is 10,000 square feet for the RPD District, single-family. And again, they're proposing 5,400 square feet or 5,040 square feet for the alternate layout. The lot width, the minimum is 75 feet. They're requesting 40 feet to be the minimum. And for front yard setback, they're requesting 20 feet minimum. The requirement is 25. Side yard, they're requesting a minimum 5 feet. The total, the requirement is 10 feet with a total of 25 feet for both sides. Side street, they're requesting 10 feet. The minimum is 15. And rear yard, they're requesting 10 feet and the minimum is 30 feet. One thing I'll mention about the lot area widths and depths, those minimums, those are minimums. Not every lot in the development is going to have those size dimensions, but these are the, the smallest of those that you will see. The applicant has cited the, the superior alternative for justification for this request. They've indicated that the smaller lot sides, sizes provide for more affordable home sites for single-family development, and they are comparable to those that are found in the adjacent plan development to the north, which is the North Lake of Tarpon Springs development. The second waiver is in regards to sidewalks, specifically along Mellon Street. The land development code does require sidewalks to be constructed along all abutting street frontages for any development. They are requesting to waive the requirement to construct sidewalks just along the Mellon Street frontage. They have cited technical impracticality as the justification for the waiver. There is an existing drainage ditch that's along Mellon Street over here, and there's also some existing concrete infrastructure throughout this drainage ditch. So this is, it's kind of hard to see in this image, but there's a picture of that. As I mentioned earlier, this property has the Pinellas Trail adjacent on the north side of Mellon Street. So it might be appropriate to require a condition that provides some sort of safe crossing for residents or future residents to get to the trail in lieu of the sidewalk. Here's an overview of the preliminary plan development criteria. Staff does believe that each of these have been met with the proposed development. And the preliminary staff recommendation is approval of the ordinance, including the two waiver requests. Staff did list five recommended conditions. The first is approval of the preliminary plan development is contingent upon the vacation of Cypress Street. The second is a pedestrian crossing shall be provided on Mellon Street to provide access to the trail. The third is due to the proximity to the cemetery. We believe that a Level 1 Cultural Resource Assessment Survey should be conducted. The fourth is just acknowledgement that public art requirements would come into play with this development, and the final development plan must be submitted within one year of any approval of this development. The, the conditions would all basically be provided at the final development plan stage. Those would be verified that those are met. And with that, I can answer any questions.
I do have a few questions. Isn't there, this property is going to be platted, I would suspect. And this, do they come to us before the plating process, or is the plating process come first?
That's done during, I'm going to defer to Pat.
Yes, the plat, the plating process is the final process. So they come to you for preliminary, preliminary plan development. Then they go to the Board of Commissioners for preliminary, back to the Board of Commissioners for final plan development, and then they plat.
Any more questions, Chair?
Go ahead. I may have a few, but I'll let you go.
Okay, so I can get my mind around it. So right now, it's a single-family resident lot. There's one house on it?
There's one home on the, yes.
And right now, if there was not a special approval being requested, what would the current non-waved use be allowed?
So it's currently zoned R100, which is a single-family zoning district. They do have density, like I said, to go up to 23 units. Based off the standards in R100, they wouldn't be able to accommodate 23 units. I'd have to look at the code to give you the minimum sizes. I know the minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
Pretty similar setbacks to what's in the RPD District.
Okay, you're going a little too fast for me, so stay with me. So I, I want to keep it straightforward. So if it was straight vanilla, met every rule without breaking anything, if we stayed with the plan, how many square feet are there and how many 10,000 square foot units would be allowed to put there?
I can't necessarily tell you how many 10,000 square foot units, because there's roads and infrastructure and things that have to go in. What I can tell you is the current permitted density is 23 units.
Okay, so without changing anything, they can put 23 on there?
Correct.
And they're asking for 28?
They're, they're asking for 18.
18?
Yes. They're within the density allowance.
Okay, and that's why I'm asking those questions. Thank, thank you very much. Because I believe, surprise, I struggle with the waiver request. So I, I just want to make sure I understand it very clearly, is that a waiver's being requested to...
There's a couple waivers.
Yeah, the two, so the first one, and somehow this math doesn't work, so I need to know, is that if the minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet, but yet the proposed is 5,400 square feet, but yet they're putting less houses, oh, not by half, how did we go, how do we go from 23 allowed to only requesting 18, but yet we cutting the lot sizes in half?
So, so I think the, the mechanics behind it, I defer the applicants because they laid it out, but essentially, you know, your density gives you what you can have blanketed across the property. But with developments, you have to also put in potential stormwater requirements, roads, other infrastructure. That eats away at your area, which ultimately eats away at potentially the number of lots that you can have.
Okay.
Which is why for this, the RPD District, it provides this waiver process so that you can design something and see what the board believes would work.
Okay, super. So I'm, I'm catching up. You're smarter than me. Okay. So I, I don't build a lot of things, but a 5,000 square, 5,400 square foot lot, that, that's, that's pretty modestly sized. Okay. And then the waiver rule, and I'm going to read it just so that I can use it. Okay, the waiver rule says you got to meet one of five. And in this case, the waiver for lot dimensions and setbacks, their reason that they should be granted the waiver is superior alternative. Smaller lot sizes provide more affordable home sites that are comparable to those found in adjacent plan development to the north, North Lake Tarpon. Okay, so supposedly, and help me here, a smaller lot size is somehow better for a homeowner? Or if the standard, or the plan was 10,000 square foot because it was decided by a group that lot sizes should be 10,000 square feet for a residential home, that somehow it's a superior alternative if they're made half as large? I, I struggle with that thought process.
Sure. That's a good question, but, so from, I can speak from staff's perspective.
Right.
Why we agree it was a superior alternative was, one, yes, it provides an alternate option for people to have single-family homes within the city of Tarpon Springs. It allows for a development of a property that's lower than the density that's permitted on the, on the site, by also still, again, providing another option to develop for a single family.
Or, or the option could be just build the number of 10,000 square foot houses that fit there?
Correct.
And then the residents could have a 10,000 square foot lot?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, super. One more question. So the other waiver request for the sidewalk and the the element, the review criteria that was chosen is technical impracticality. They can't put a sidewalk because there's a ditch there, even though the rule clearly says there shall be a sidewalk, but we're not going to put a sidewalk there because it's inconvenient?
So one of the waiver criteria is technical impracticality. Specifically, it says, "We're strict application of the requirement would be technically impractical in terms of engineering, design, construction practices, which will be realized." So again, from a staff perspective, this is existing, this stormwater drain here is an existing infrastructure piece that provides a purpose.
Isn't it just a ditch?
It's not just a ditch. It has, I mean, it, it serves a purpose. There's also, I think even bigger than the swale is the presence of these concrete structures. They're probably related to culverts or whatnot, related to the engineering and design of the ditch. So again, you know, we believe there is a technical impracticality for this particular frontage.
Couldn't, couldn't they bury it and put the sidewalk in? I mean, wouldn't that be an option?
I defer the applicant or engineer.
They just did one of, one of my house. They buried the whole thing, and there's a sidewalk. And then the drainage is underground.
So.
Wouldn't that be an option?
I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
But yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
They, they could provide a crosswalk to the other side of the street.
That, that was what staff's perspective was. There is a pedestrian facility on the north side that is ideal. So providing some sort of access from the neighborhood over there could give them that connection.
You know, it, it seems that we get, I won't say bombarded, but we get an awful lot of requests, an awful lot of requests with regard to reducing lot sizes. My question, this is probably to staff or something to staff to think about, is why does the city just look at... does the city just look at reducing lot sizes than having lot sizes at 10,000 square feet, and we have to grant a variance or something every time somebody wants to build something? I just...
Great observation. So, you know, as we go through, we're, you know, currently in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, that's going to ultimately give us a roadmap to do updates to our land development code, which is where those minimum lot sizes are, and that's something we definitely will take a look at.
Yeah, because I...
It's pretty common, especially with, a lot of our properties within the city are smaller than what's allowed. They're not conforming, and to get to develop those, you have to go through avenues.
If you looked, they're probably all non-conforming.
Most of them.
You know, that you made 10,000 square foot lots in Tarpon Springs.
If I could add a little bit, I think we've had this discussion a couple of times, that a planned development district in planning world is, you write your own code. Tarpon has a strange section of the code, where we have a planned development code, but it's got dimensional standards. It's unusual. I'm not sure how that happened. It's something we should look at in the comp plan and in the code. And I think, you know, the trend you're seeing for with these smaller lots, you know, it's something that, that we should consider in the comp plan and LDC updates is, is these types of trends of housing that are coming in. So thanks for that observation.
Well, thank you. And one of the concerns that I have, and maybe, maybe the applicant can address them, this is a heavily, heavily wooded piece of property. And one of the things I really can't stand is when somebody starts clearcutting. I know we've got a tree ordinance. I just don't like somebody cutting trees just to plant trees that may not live. And, and so I don't know if there's a plan, or maybe applicant could speak to it, as far as, or does the city have a preservation requirement with regard to existing green space?
There are requirements in our tree ordinance, and that's something that's looked at in the preliminary and both the final plans. So they have to basically do a survey of all the existing trees, sizes, you know, the health of the tree and whatnot, to determine, you know, replacement, whatnot. I don't necessarily believe, Pat, do they have to preserve existing trees? If they remove, they have to replace. What about...
Well, they can't replace all these trees, because there's an awful lot of them.
Right.
You know, I just, you know, to me, a tree, a wooded lot, or a home with trees around is more attractive than just a house sitting on an empty piece of property without some green space. But any otherbody else have any questions?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions.
I have a brief question.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Go ahead. Okay. Well, my question is, who actually determines the waivers that are requested?
So typically, it's the applicant. They come up with a proposal and request it. During the review of this application is where we uncovered the two waivers, just saying you need a sidewalk, otherwise a waiver request. So it's usually staff identifying deficiencies with the code and/or the applicant requesting them on their own.
Because I mean, you know, there's rear yard dimensions, side streets, side yard, front yard, all these waiver requested, and all I'm asking is, does the city determine the final verdict on these?
So this is, so this is the request that they have, are these dimensions. Ultimately, if it gets approved, those dimensions are written in an ordinance, and then they're basically preserved. So when a home is proposed for development and they have a building permit come in, we make sure that those setbacks and those dimensions match. And then as far as lot dimensions, that's verified during the plating process and final development plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. The, I'm not, I'm not being rude and playing with my phone, I'm actually looking at something here. I, so the, the, so the sidewalk will be on the Jasmine, okay, on Jasmine, and that's, that would be the more walkable part of the, of that development. So with my trusty little distance calculator, so from that, that development to CVS Pharmacy is one-third of a mile, okay, so which is walkable, right? And to, to the, you know, about the Starbucks there, it comes out to seven-tenths of a mile. So that is, and I know in the, in the code, in the comprehensive code, we want to encourage developments that have the ability to have, use their cars less and walk places, right?
Correct.
So it appears that this is doable for, you know, most, and most people should walk that far. They need a little exercise. So, but my question is, is there sidewalk access? Okay, they're going to do their sidewalk in front of their development, but is there sidewalk access that somebody could walk from that development to CVS or across the street? I know they can get across 19. There's, there's a thing for pedestrians. But is there enough sidewalk access for them from that development to walk over to CVS?
I didn't necessarily look at that specific location. The biggest opportunity that we saw was the adjacent seat of Pinellas Trail, because that can provide access to a lot of different amenities.
Yeah.
So as far as the exact connection between there and CVS, I'm not sure if there's any gaps within that route.
So if they wanted to come from Jasmine, if they want to come down Jasmine and then take a right on Tarpon Avenue to then go over to CVS?
There are sidewalks there.
There would be sidewalks for that whole...
On Tarpon, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that's good. All right, that was my question.
I don't think there's sidewalks on Jasmine.
That's what I was going to say. I'm not positive about all the way along Jasmine.
But that, that would be the city's responsibility to tie that out, right?
Potentially, that's, yeah, potentially that's something in the future, you know, we look at sidewalk apps all the time to fill in gaps. Also, when proposals such as these come in, that's why we have the provision in the code to connect sidewalks, to provide future connections.
Right, but that would be your responsibility, the city's responsibility, not the applicant?
Potentially, depending on the situation.
Fill that gap in.
Yes, and I can, I can add to that. So there was a new sidewalk built in front of the cemetery addition on Jasmine, the east side of Jasmine. There is a programmed sidewalk to go all the way up to Rose Hill Cemetery. So that's programmed. I believe it'll be built this year next, and then the applicant would be putting their sidewalk. The piece that will still be missing in foreseeable future budget-wise is the Rose Hill Cemetery piece. I don't know when that would be programmed, and the rest is, is there or imminent.
You know, the, the city at this point, oh, the question I have for you, there is adequate sewer and water capacity for these, these...
Correct. Yes, we, we ask them for SLEs and PACs, and it's reviewed by our utilities folks.
Okay. And the way, the way Tarpon Springs is reaching build-out, I think the applicant would make more money selling it off at funeral plots in the future, but that's, this is adjacent to the cemetery. That being said, the applicant, is there other comments I'll hear from the applicant? George, you ought to consider cemetery plots.
Yeah, I know.
More money per square foot.
George Stamis, representing Pioneer Developers of America, the applicant. So I want to add a little color to the lot size question, because I know that was a question here. The, the 10,000 square foot R-100 district is an old Tarpon Springs district that many, many sites were zoned many years ago. It's antiquated. There's very, very few developments being built at 10,000 square feet, and when they are, usually it's in a nicer area with a lot of other surrounding large lot subdivisions or large lot homes that would support the idea of additional ones being built. So what we have on this particular site is, for neighbors, is two cemeteries, one to the south, one to the east, and then a recreational sports complex to the, to the south, actually. South is the recreational sports complex. Come on this. At any rate, three sides are surmounted by, two, two sides are cemeteries, one's a recreational complex, and the opposite, the north side, we built many years ago, is North Lakes. And those are small lot sizes that were established for that area many, many years ago, and we also built the townhomes at North Lake, just to the south of that, which are townhomes. And then we have another townhome community currently being developed across the street on the west side. So it's all small lot subdivisions, cemeteries, and sports complexes around this property. There's very few people that will want to purchase a 10,000 square foot lot with a size home you would build on a 10,000 square foot lot. It's just not appropriate for the market, for the area. So the lot sizes that we've proposed are the same as we're building at Riverbend Village. I don't know if you've been there yet, but it's on the opposite bank of the Anclot River, and on, on Anclot Road on one side and Eleanor Boulevard on the other side. It's an 11-acre site, and we have 54 homes on it. Take a look, they're beautiful, and the lots are good size, even though I know that it's not 10,000 square feet, they live well, and the people are very happy with the lot sizes there. It's really the appropriate lot size for that particular area, based on the surroundings. As far as the sidewalks go, no, that was a question. I know the city has programmed sidewalks to fill in that gap from Rose Cemetery heading to the south, all the way to Keystone, and then we'll fill in the section in front of our project, which will make a continuous sidewalk. We built sidewalks when we built North Lakes years ago, so it'd be a continuous sidewalk there. I believe that's programmed for this year with the city, and that would fill in that, that run of sidewalks. On the Mellon Street side, it's not just a ditch, it was a drainage facility built for Mellon Street drainage, and we built Mellon Street too, for the city, years ago. But we didn't put that drainage facility in, they came in later and built a very wide ditch there with concrete baffles of about every 50 feet going across. The technical impracticality is there's just no space to build a sidewalk. It's, it would be almost physically impossible to do underground vault storage there for, for the drainage there, it would just not make any sense at all. So the idea was, since we have the beautiful trail right across Mellon Street, to provide a crossing, a safe crossing for residents to go to the trail, and to your point, you could ride your bike downtown, you could ride, you know, you get a lot of places either walking or by bike on that trail, and then you'd also have the sidewalks for walking. I think it's a great, it's a good plan, it's the right-sized lots, and I want to say one more thing about RPD, because we've done a lot of RPD residential plan development, is a very common zoning. It's not always called RPD, it's called different things in different places, but it's supposed to be a flexible zoning category that lets you design setbacks and lot sizes and a lot of other dimensional criteria to fit an appropriate circumstance. Now, Tarpon's is weird, because they have these set of dimensional criteria and a zoning category that's meant to be flexible. Therefore, you have to apply for, for...
Waivers.
Variances, I guess you call, or whatever you want to call them. Most places don't have them. In fact, Pinellas County has a new Euclidean zoning called R5, just to accommodate small lot subdivisions, which allow lots down to 3,500 square feet with very reduced sizes and reduced setbacks. Because they're, they're acknowledging that the, the whole movement towards home sizes and home lot sizes with the limited amount of land in Pinellas County is getting smaller, and they have to be smaller lots, and of course, the cost of land's going up, so we're trying to make affordable housing for people who want to live in our county. And so, so that's kind of like the, the reason why you're seeing all these variants requested, requested, not all of them, there's some dimensional requests in a zoning criteria that's normally meant to be flexible, and Tarpon's is broken. Their RPD, their RPD ordinance is broken. It needs to be revamped, and I think everybody here at the Planning Department will acknowledge it. That's upcoming, it's going to have to be done. Any other questions that I can answer?
I, I do have one question for you, George. What's your, what's your plan for all the green space, because I know it's a heavily wooded piece of property?
Yeah, I mean, so there's small lots, you're going to lose trees.
I mean, obviously, you're going to have to clear out a lot.
But there's a huge replanting requirement in Tarpon Springs, and it's either replant them or pay dearly for the ones you don't replant, and it's, if you want to see what, you know, how it turns out, drive through our projects on Mirrors Boulevard. Those trees were planted...
West ones.
West ones, but how many years ago?
Twenty.
About 20 years ago, we've replanted that, per the city ordinances, with oak trees mostly and other, the trees are enormous. 20 years later, it looks like a forest, and they're in the right place. You know, there weren't, you know, you didn't have to, you put them where you needed to have them, to get the shade that you needed, and to get the tree, tree canopies that you want. And, you know, it looked, they looked twiggy when you first planted them, but 20 years later, it looks like a mature, a mature, forested subdivision. And that's, that's what we end up with, with new subdivisions now, is you have a planting requirement, and it's to your benefit to plant as many as you can, rather than pay the, the fees for the inches that you don't plant. So you want to plant well, and plant in the right places, and I know it's not as good as a new tree, a tree that's been there for a while, but, you know, that's kind of how it has to work.
Any, the board have any other questions to the applicant?
No. It's not? I can attest to the tree thing. In front of my office, we planted a oak tree, and now we're like, very regularly getting sighted, because the tree is like over the street, and it's gone crazy.
I mean, I mean, if you plant, if you plant, you know, a code tree right now, in five years, it'll be that big around, and in 20 years, it's that big around. It's unbelievable how, you know, how it goes by, and...
Well, if you can incorporate without having to clearcut, that always, it's always beneficial, so you don't have to plant a tree.
And so you don't have to pay the fee.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're pretty, they're pretty heavy-duty in Tarpon on the, on the fees.
All right. That being said...
Mr. Stamis?
Yes.
Obviously, you're well-known, and I don't, and there was no disrespect when I was hammering on the lot sizes. The challenges are, those are the rules we're supposed to work with.
Understood.
And you know that, and, and yes, Pat has reminded us several times, that the RPD districts are supposed to be their own set, but it doesn't say that anywhere.
Understand.
And, and we've had this plan that we're supposed to follow, and it just seems like all we're ever asked is to change and deviate and not stick to that plan, and frankly, I'm a planner, right?
Yeah.
Make a plan, you stick to it, so do you. And so until we can get that caught up, we're forced to try and unravel those and, and treat everybody fairly with that set of rules. And we're like, sometimes we keep them, you know, we follow them, sometimes we don't.
Yeah.
But I appreciate your explanation, it helped me.
And it was, and it was a reasonable question, and the, you know, the fact of the matter is, when a plan keeps on having to get changed and changed and changed and changed and changed, it's probably look, time to look at it and see why.
Well, that's, that's kind of the comment that we had.
And I think what's happened is, over the years, lot sizes have went to the old 10,000 square foot is a standard lot, like nobody's building 10,000 square foot lots anymore, and there's a reason, especially in Pinellas County. And, you know, most of the other jurisdictions have understood it and revised and gotten their codes so that they provide the flexibility that you need, but Tarpon hasn't done that yet, but they will.
Yeah, that was part of the comment, is that we, you know, as a board, we see, I can't tell you how many of these we see on a monthly basis.
I understand, yeah, there's, there's a reason probably, though, I mean, honestly, when you look at it.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? I'm sorry, unless the board is done, asking question, or any public comment? Yes?
My name's Annie Samarcos, 32 West Tarpon Avenue, and I know everybody here. I feel like at some point, we have to start being kind to the people in Tarpon Springs. We better be kind to the earth, we better be kind to the environment, we don't have to chop down every bit of green space and every tree. There's something on Facebook, it says, "It seems city of Tarpon Springs," and I'll input this, "and the applicant would, could, and should realize this parcel of land would, could, and should be needed as future cemetery expansion. It borders Rose Cemetery, and it's across the street from Cycladia Cemetery. This parcel of land has a logical use for departed residents, not future residents." At some point, I mean, we all, I think a lot of us are... At some point, I mean, we all, I think a lot of us are thinking this and nobody wants to say it. And I'm turning into an old Greek lady and I'll say it quite often. You might see me coming up here more, sorry. And I know both of you.
Well, Annie, it's just a matter of, the city doesn't own it.
I know, so you know what, I don't have an idea.
That's up to the city.
Don't lock down my village.
Well, we'll build a cemetery there.
Okay, any other comment? Mr. Delakis?
Old home week, almost. All right, I want to go over some of the stuff y'all have in your packet. Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. First to Mr. Kouskoudis's reference to the trees. Let me see if I can't do this. In your packet, you will see what that looks like. And on P002, you'll see all the trees that are going to be removed to fit these 18 units in it. Also on, it was on page 118, and if you look online, but on this one, it shows a walking diagram of various potential gopher tortoise holes, burrows, and also tree hollowings. Now, I'd like to go to the staff report. Good questions, I'm really impressed with you guys. Now, on page three of the staff report, consistent with the comprehensive plan, staff analysis, blah, blah, blah. The proposed development has been determined to be generally consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city comprehensive plan. Again, y'all had an issue before about this unbalancing, this generally. One, I didn't see any backup in here about what parts of the comm plan they are consistent with and which ones they weren't consistent with. Now, on page four or five, relation to major transportation facilities. I didn't see a traffic study. I know it's only 18 units, but you and I know as well that people are going to go out Mellon, they're going to go to Jasmine, turn left, go to the light, because that's where it's protected to get in and out of town. And I was driving up that way today. Four o'clock, traffic was backed up all the way to Jasmine. And you're going to add more traffic coming in. So one, on that, where is a traffic analysis? And environmental design number six, property is now located in environmentally sensitive area. Really? All those trees, look at, look at the diagram here. Is that not environmentally sensitive areas? And if you read their actual environmental study, they looked for various species. They did find some gopher tortoise holes, but they were only there one day, one day. And then lastly, on this environmental design, it says here, however, this site is adjacent to the Rose Cemetery to the south and may be archaeological resources in proximity is recommended Level 1 Cultural Resource Assessment Survey can be completed at the time of final plan development. I happened to drive through Rose Cemetery on Saturday because I wanted to drive by the property. That's how I saw the sign and realized the hearing tonight. A Class 1 survey usually does borings and diggings. There should be some requirement that there is some kind of electronic or ultrasound to see if they're not grave sites anywhere on what might be Cypress Road platted or into this property. Because before Cypress Street Road was platted, there were grave sites. We saw some there from the early, early 1900s. Couple there were from originally the late 1800s. So one, there definitely needs to be some type of a study to see, because you've read in the past, Clearwater, Tampa, big thing in Tampa, they had all that school and those apartments on the cemetery. What they have to do, they have to go back and deal with it afterwards. So that should be a requirement. So you should be having, and it was mentioned, Mr. Kouskoudis came to one of the meetings about how these projects are presented to y'all and then information comes back later that may have changed your determination. These are things that I feel are deficient in being presented to you and a fact to make a full decision on this particular project. Thank you.
With that, is there any additional comments or questions of the staff?
It sounds like there's more public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My apologies, I didn't know if you wanted to take some time for consideration. Good evening Chairman and Board members, also members of the staff. Robert Rockline, 755 North Lake Boulevard, Tarpon Springs. Just for reference, I'm about 10 lots north of the proposed development in the, one of the communities that the applicant has built in the past on what was probably insufficient lots even at that time. So I've been there for, I guess about eight months now or so. I'm a member of the HOA Board and I'm not here in opposition to any of this at all, nor am I aware of any opposition in our community. It's more just informational, I know this is only the first step in a long process, but we did have some concerns, some comments that I'd like to state for consideration. I may or may not get to some of the further meetings down the road. Site plans such as this, one concern with us being somewhat adjacent to it is of course, the construction entry and exit. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I know the final egress to Mellon Street is offset from North Lake Boulevard. That's always good, you don't want to create a T if you don't have to. You know, there's pros and cons to both from a traffic safety study. Mellon Street is increasing in volume somewhat, even in the short time that I've been there. So is Jasmine. People use it as a cut through from Keystone to 19 and maybe sometimes vice versa, but more so in the morning going up for people heading north. But it becomes a way to get around things that people acclimate themselves to, obviously. So I've seen, I've seen the volume increase slightly. At the very end of Keystone on Mellon, there's a double yellow line. Perhaps before any, any construction activity takes place, the city could continue that double yellow line all the way to Jasmine, maybe some other type of road diet or other traffic calming measures or something like that, just to be proactive for safety. The cut through, like I said, is real. It's, that's one thing that's been commented greatly in our community. People have noticed it getting more and more. The sidewalk waiver granting that, you know, I don't, I've never seen anybody walk on that side of the street. I have seen people walk on Jasmine on a fairly regular basis to and from, although not, not that many. Maybe, you know, six to 10 a day that I see. On Mellon, nobody except on the trail side. So once again, if you're going to have a crosswalk, traffic safety becomes a concern because that's one end to the other. And I've seen people, you know, step on the, step on the gas because they feel it's kind of a free, freeway and there's good sight lines. So double yellow line and some other considerations, especially if you're going to put pedestrians on there, that's important. The landscaping plan and environmental concerns, of course, should be paramount and stuff like this. Development, unfortunately, you know, usually when you, when you clear a lot because of foundation and subterranean infrastructure and such like that, roadways, drainage, it's almost a given. So if the developer can't preserve something mature here and there, that's great. If not, we consider oak trees in our community a blessing and a curse because a lot of the leaves and things come down and stain sidewalks and driveways, but they are beautiful trees. So perhaps, you know, be guarded by the city arborist and such like that. But more is certainly better and, you know, the growth does occur. I'm involved in zoning and developmental concerns up north still. People, it's the one thing people complain about the most, but two years later, five years later, you don't hear a peep. I noticed on the site plan, and I only printed out copies last week at work, there's some sort of pumping station on the, on the north side. I don't know if that's for sewage or water or drainage or whatever, it may not be defined as of yet. I don't know if there's any other alternative location for that, but that was one thing that the, the community members brought up after reviewing that site plan. The affordability that smaller lots bring, that's generally a good thing. You want, you want to provide to a greater spectrum of home buyer. Prices are going up, land prices are going up, construction and material prices are going up. A lot of developers, where I come from up north, for even smaller subdivisions like this, sometimes the jurisdictions almost mandate a little greater affordability to one or two of the units. Sometimes it's 10%, sometimes it's 15%. Just something to consider going forward to say, hey, let's have an auction for a family that's in dire need and let's give them the same opportunity. Sometimes it's one house, sometimes it's two houses for a subdivision this side. It's always nice to see and that may be something for the plans going forward with the city. So this project, of course, is much lower in magnitude than some of the other big things that you've been dealing with lately. Generally, there's, you know, not as much negative impact because of that, but there's still, you know, concerns. And of course, the loss of open space, you know, every, every camel has its own back. And who knows if it's this straw or that straw that finally breaks it. So like other people have mentioned, you know, if you're constantly knocking off open space out of the city, we're going to have one, you know, generally paved, developed area. So, you know, whenever possible, and you gentlemen seem very, very considerate of the big picture, which we greatly appreciate. So, you know, you just, you have to look at it. We always say, think, think local, think regional, but act local. That's, that's your charge here. So I want to wish all of you a very happy holiday season to you and your families.
Thank you, you too.
I do, I do have a follow-up question with staff. It actually, it has to do with what Mr. Delakis said, and it just, just so I'm clear. The size of this project, obviously, I think he was referencing when we had to get traffic studies for the larger project. There is a number, okay, or a unit number that triggers a traffic study.
Correct, it's based off the number of trips, correct Pat, is 51 trips?
Yes, so.
Which generates 18.
So this, this project, does it reach that?
No, there are two reasons to do a traffic study. One is when the code, when the peak hour trips, according to code, require a traffic study. That peak hour trip number in our code is 300.
Okay, this is.
The second reason is for operational reasons. So Anclot Harbor was a good example that didn't trigger the 300, but for operational, you know. So, yeah, neither of those was here.
I just wanted to put that, I knew that this didn't trigger it, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
This is less than 180 trips a day and it's 18 peak hour trips.
So that traffic study is not required by the code?
That's correct.
Any follow-up after opening my mouth?
Yeah, the, what Mr. Delakis said regarding possible grave sites there. How do you determine, though, how do you determine that?
So that's why we recommended doing an archaeological survey as part of the review. Again, I'm going to turn to Pat, she's more of an expert in this field.
Yeah, there were two reasons. There are archaeological sites within close enough proximity, not associated with the site file on, I'm sorry, with the cemetery, on the master site file. And then, of course, the adjacent cemetery.
What's involved with an archaeological?
With, with the survey?
The survey, yeah.
They look at master site file, they, they look at, you know, I'm not exactly sure what else is involved. They do go on the property, they look at the history of the property, whatever the state has on record. They look at old aerials. It's almost in a way somewhat similar to an environmental risk assessment. And then they do, you know, look at evidence on the property and they know what they're looking for. I'm not completely sure exactly what those characteristics are, but.
Is that a, and this may be for the city attorney. Is that an exceptional, an acceptable add-on to a motion that that, that a study like that be made?
Well, I think that, and of course, I would defer to staff on this, but I think that the, because this is a preliminary review, the, I believe there is an archaeological study that's recommended. So that can be part, obviously, a part of the condition of recommendation for approval to the commission. But expanding the scope of what's required underneath your code, I think becomes a little bit problematic. So while you can recommend that the archaeological study be done, I don't believe, I don't believe it would be a reasonable recommendation under the law to require a, to add specifications for what that archaeological review needs to include at this time.
So we can just do it as a recommendation, we could have a motion with the recommendation?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I think that would be a reasonable recommendation.
I think the applicant wants to address that issue.
George Zootz, representing Pioneer. I wanted to point out, the city has run utility lines the closest to the cemetery property, buried lines in there. And I don't think there's any record of finding any, any concerns out there.
Okay. Is that along that Cypress Street? Is that?
Yeah, it's the closest to the border of the Rose Cemetery there. Well, one other thing, this is kind of a model of what we're doing at Riverbend, which George Stamis pointed out. And the average price in there, and this is affordable housing for Pinellas County, is probably in the high 300 range. So we're not talking about building something that we'd be ashamed of in the town. And when you're looking at the overall average of homes in Tarpon Springs, I think it would be enhancement to it. But we're just trying to make it work with the amount of lots.
Thank you. Unless anybody has any other questions, I'm going to go ahead and close any public comment. And hear from the board if anybody wants to entertain a motion that we can discuss.
I'll make the, I'll make an emotion that we approve application 21-134 with a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that a archaeological survey be done, requested.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion along the board?
Can I ask a question? Staff also had four other recommended conditions. I just want clarity for your motion, is it just to have the condition for the survey? Or are the other ones included?
I think the application in and of itself.
Well, let's defer to the maker of the motion.
As presented, that's, that's, that's part of the application, correct?
Correct, yeah, the archaeological survey was one of the conditions. I just wanted to clarify that the rest were also included.
That's a recommended recommendation, those conditions plus a recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think the clarification was, the archaeological survey was part of the conditions.
Oh, it was, okay.
In the staff's report, right.
It's a recommended condition.
Right, so I think the clarification was, because you pulled that one out, we just need to make sure that the remainder of the conditions you're also seeking to have in there. So as presented in the staff report.
Yes. Should I revise my motion?
Just for purposes of the record, that might be best.
Okay. So the, the recommendation is already in there?
Correct, correct.
Therefore, I make an, I make a motion to approve application 21-134.
With the existing recommendation?
With the existing recommendation, staff recommendation.
And a recommendation for the archaeological.
Which includes the archaeological survey.
No, did it.
All right, do you want to amend your second?
I'll second that again.
Any, any more discussion?
Just a little bit. I think it's obvious that this was a great example of how these good, well-designed projects are running up against old rules that we know we're going to clarify and then a sense of urgency that we get that, so that I don't have to make a fool of myself.
No, no, you're right on the money.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Koulionos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Uh, no.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes. Okay, that being, let me hit the gavel with that one, okay. Next item on the agenda, I believe, we're going to go back and discuss the minutes, but I'm going to ask for a five-minute break.
I just wanted to make a point before we move on, is that a quorum is for members, but an affirmative vote of those present must have passed or duffed, okay, never mind, never mind. Move forward, sorry. Well, because.
I'm glad you checked in.
Well, yeah, because HPB has it, that if you have a quorum, you have to have all, you have to be affirmative votes.
You're drinking lots of water and that's why.
Yeah, I was like, wait a minute, we only have four, so.
Yeah.
Because I was listening, is that like a super majority?
No, so every board is different.
Yes.
Because there's, there's seven that sit on this board, so four is a quorum.
Right.
Five, but seven are two alternatives. So some of the boards, if you have less than a full board present, you have to have not just a majority of those. not just a majority of those present, and the affirmative. So, like, for tonight, there's four present, but a full board would be five. If your rules limit those.